Good evening. Good evening, welcome to tonight's Lakeville City Council Candidate Forum, sponsored by the Lakeville Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm Brian Knapp with Fairview Ridge's Hospital and a member of the Lakeville Area Chamber of Commerce and Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. I will serve as tonight's moderator. The timekeeper for tonight's forum will be Tim Roach, President of Lakeville Area Chamber of Commerce and CVB. In 2006, there are six candidates for the two open city council seats. They are seated alphabetically, starting at my left: Jack Atkinson, Israel Aranda, Luke Helyer, James McCarty, Matthew Shore, and Brian Wheeler. The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. Questions were sent to all the candidates in advance with the agreement that we would also take audience questions. Question cards are located just outside the council chambers. Write down questions you may have and give them to our timekeeper, Mr. Roach. He will then direct questions to me depending on time. Personal questions or questions directed to one candidate will not be accepted, and time will dictate how many questions we can get to. Each candidate will have two minutes for introductions and opening remarks, then each candidate will receive 90 seconds to respond to each question. Finally, each candidate will receive 90 seconds for wrap-up and closing remarks. A straw poll before tonight's event determine the order for the candidates. Mr. Wheeler will start us off, and we will then proceed clockwise with each candidate responding. With 30 seconds remaining, Mr. Roach will hold up this card in turn, and when time is expired, he will hold up this card. With each new question, we'll start with the next clockwise candidate, so each candidate will have the opportunity to go first. Are there any questions?
No, sir.
Alright, if not, let's get started. So, Mr. Wheeler, we're going to begin with you. We've asked the candidates to include their top three priorities in their opening remarks.
My name is Brian Wheeler. I'm a small business owner here at Baldi's Barbecue. I'm very intrigued in doing this. I have a lot of people come in to eat, and we always get into political debates, I would say they are, and they always seem to think I win. So, they were like, "You gotta go try this." And I agreed with them. So, my main thing that I want to be a voice for our city is our youth and the non-facilities that we have for our Lakeville city. Second is the small businesses. I've gone through the rigmarole of all of it, and I believe there's a lot of things we can change and better in this. Third, I think the best thing about Lakeville is that we are a strong community, and it's been proven, definitely for the last two years of all the things going on, and I truly love living here, and I just want to help make the city as good or better than it can be. Thank you.
Mr. Atkinson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jack Atkinson. I'm a 25-year Lakeville resident. I'm a native Minnesotan. I grew up in northeast Minneapolis in St. Anthony Village, graduated from the University of St. Thomas, and was commissioned a second lieutenant in the United States Air Force. I attended flight training and assigned to fly F-4 Phantoms and had a top-secret clearance. I did this throughout various locations in the world, from Miami to Korea, to Seymour Johnson and Ramstein Air Base in the Philippines. I concluded my service in the Air Force with the Illinois National Guard. In all total, I served eight years. I returned to Minnesota and started a career in sales. For the past 17 years, I've worked in various management positions with General Mills in the US retail operations. I have many years managing and have worked with multimillion-dollar budgets and managing people. I have excellent negotiation skills, having to deal with some of our most difficult customers in the CPG industry. Married with a blended family of six children, five of which graduated from Lakeville North High School, and six grandchildren. And I've been involved in various community organizations over the past 25 years. I believe firmly in strong family values, because that is the roots of a strong community. Top three priorities: Taxes and spending, I think that's everybody's, should be everybody's number one, growth and development, and services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Mr. Aranda.
Thank you so much for inviting me to this. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for putting this together. My name is, hello everyone, my name is Israel Aranda, and I've lived in Lakeville for almost 10 years. I co-owned a family-operated construction business with my father here, which we based here in Lakeville. Since living in Lakeville for almost 10 years, I've come to notice the increase in diversity that is becoming Lakeville. And I am running for Lakeville City Council because as the diversity increases, it's important to me that community members who are people of color see themselves in the city council. And my core message, or my three important things would be infrastructure, public safety, and exploring new ideas for revenue and creating and keeping a balanced budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aranda. Mr. Helyer.
Thank you, Brian, and the Lakeville Area Chamber for hosting tonight's forum. I agree, I appreciate the work it takes to put this together. I grew up in Lakeville. I went to Lake Marion Elementary, Kenwood Trail Junior High, and Lakeville High School, and this is a community that I've loved. I met my wife here and decided a few years ago to move back to Lakeville and chose to raise our children here because we love it so much. I've spent the last 10 years working in the public schools in Lakeville as an advisor to the Youth and Government Program, not as my career, but as something to give back to the community. I also serve as a member of the Dakota County Planning Commission, and I've learned that a skill of mine is to understand that I like to learn. I'm good at that, and I learn by engaging in issues, and I fuel myself on that knowledge. It's fun for me, surprisingly. I knew that this was a time of life that I could invest in learning in city issues and be a part of that. I decided to join this race because I'd like my daughters to have the same opportunity to grow up in Lakeville that my wife and I had. Even though Lakeville has doubled in size since I began attending Lakeville schools, if we do things right over the next 10 years with the right leadership, we'll be able to continue that small-town feel that we all cherish. Top three issues for me really are fixing roads, keeping the lid on property taxes, and long-term development, as responsive to market conditions and allows families and businesses to continue to thrive in Lakeville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helyer. Mr. McCarty.
Yes, thank you, Brian, and Chamber of Commerce. I'm glad to be here. This is a very bad injury, just got out of the hospital, so there's my mercy card. It's over. Okay. I've been a resident of Lakeville here since 2002, Burnsville before that, for 18 years. I'm originally from Michigan, Dearborn, Michigan, specifically, and my undergraduates from Michigan State University in Management with minors in Economics and Finance, and I have an MBA from Wayne State University. A number of corporate jobs since then, Magic Pan Incorporated, restaurant groups, Stouffer's, their hotel groups, as well as their restaurants, and institutional management. I have a very good career with that, and I made a big decision back when to buy a restaurant over in Bloomington, proceeded to work myself to death for about 11 years, which I'm sure you agree with there. Very fortunate to sell it, and after that, fell into the mortgage business for 10 years, became a broker, and found it very lucrative, and did very well with it, and enjoyed it. That's it. Family, my original, my father's originally born in Hibbing, so it's sort of like going back to my roots back here. Come from a very hard-working family, mostly professionals. The original reason why I was sent here from Michigan was to take over supposedly troubled properties and straighten out them as far as management experience and so on and so forth, and was a, had area as well as national responsibilities for training management. Now, see, I'm down to 30 seconds, so I better hurry up here. Okay. Priority number one: promote core beliefs, economic prosperity, and the education of our children. Priority number two: strengthen family and community, which is the vision statement of the city, and in lieu of, and of tantamount importance, is to continue to provide a strong foundation for healthy neighborhoods, successful businesses, and invest in the comprehensive planning and long-term planning of our city. Okay? I feel very strongly about the current management of our city, and I promote it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Mr. Shore.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. My name is Matthew Shore. I recently turned 25. I'm the youngest candidate, so I have that going for me. I've always been very politically aware. I love helping and adding to any community I'm a part of. I've lived in Lakeville for, coming up on 10 years now. I think it would be a great example to set for other young people in Lakeville to have a young person on the city council. We have a young mayor, and I think that's working out very well for us. My friends, family, and neighbors encourage me to run, among them, police officers, home builders, just great people in the community. I was in the Army briefly. I went to school in New York where I was involved with public school reform in Bronx and Harlem. I loved that. I took a serious passion to that in a leadership role. My core values are honesty, integrity, and authenticity, and I'll approach all the problems that we have with a pragmatic lens and hear every voice. That's going to be my priority. My core values are going to be an emphasis on building local business, responsible growth, addressing those needs, and building a sense of community here in Lakeville. Thank you for coming out, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer the following question. What do you believe are the most essential services provided by the city of Lakeville? Are there any services that the city does not provide that you believe it should? Are there any services currently provided by the city that you should believe, that you believe should be cut back or eliminated? And we're going to begin with Mr. Atkinson.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Most essential services, I think, out of anything, I start with public safety. Police and fire have to be priority in any, in any community. I believe that's a big strength. Park and recs. Lakeville has an excellent park and recs department. This is an unbelievable area for park and recs. When you look at everything from antlers to Ritter to Aaronson, the ballfields that we have throughout town, that is very strong. Excellent trails for biking, excellent opportunities for youth, that second to none. So, that is a essential service. Public works. You know, people don't give public works a lot of credit, but I tell you what, when you're getting eight, 10, 12 inches of snow, and those plows come by your house a couple times to get you out so you get to the, get to work on time, that is excellent. They do a great job. I think our public's work department, they work log hours, they're very dedicated, and I do believe that they do a very good job. So, I think what, those are the three top essentials that I see. There aren't any that I don't think that we should add, however, I will say the one that, that we need to probably look at exiting is municipal liquor, and I'm just going to say this very clear. I don't believe government should be in competition with the private sector, period. That's my feeling on that, so that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Mr. Aranda.
With regard to the first question, public safety, we have a great park system that we should continue to maintain and look for ways of improving, and our current utilities such as our groundwater and Lakeville water treatment facility. We could look into, regarding to the second question, are there any services the city should not provide? I think that we should, we could look into Wi-Fi accessibility for residents in Lakeville, similar to what other cities in Minnesota have done, like, for example, Minneapolis. I think that we could look into expanding our park and rec with more amenities, specifically a permanent dome or possibly an inflatable dome for our youth, where sports such as football, soccer, ultimate frisbee can be played during the winter. Creating this amenity will attract new and younger families as we continue to develop our city. It's important to consider that the park and rec, as I gather from my research, already has its hands full maintaining our current park system and the staff required to maintain it, but it would be endeavor, it would be a challenge for sure, but I think that it's one that we should explore. Lastly, the local government is the first interaction that our citizens have with the government, and we want to make sure that it's, that it's a strong government. And by this, I mean, I want to answer that I don't think that there are any services that we should cut back on presently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aranda. Mr. Helyer.
Thank you. Like the previous two candidates, I think public safety is priority number one for the city, and that's police and fire service. Those are essential to maintain for continued growth. The other issues, I think, really come down to effectively and efficiently managing our infrastructure, roads, specifically sewer and water, and our parks. I have the experience of living in a city that didn't take care of their infrastructure. I remember coming home, well, not even coming home, getting a call from my neighbor who was 92 in Edina, and said, "Don't be alarmed, there's a bunch of trucks in your front yard." Well, okay. So, we get home, and there's a backhoe in our front yard that, at the time, it's the size of yards, about a four-square court, and the waterman had broken in front of our house. That was the first of three times in six years that the waterman had burst in front of our house. Edina, I think, runs their infrastructure on hope and prayer. They hope things don't break, and they pray that they're not expensive when they have to be fixed. And I just think that we can learn from that as a younger city to make sure that we maintain our infrastructure moving forward. Finally, I believe the city council should be nimble and responsible to our community needs and reallocate resources as they're needed, and if there are areas of excess to be found, to shift the budget and make things work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helyer. Mr. McCarty.
Right. Like the, my three people preceding me, obviously, law enforcement, fire, essential services are very important. That is our job here. Okay. I'm not going to bring in a lot of my personal beliefs on the stuff like that because a job as a city council is to reflect 60,000 residents. That would be my job. It'd be to interface with the city council, and also, most importantly, our current administration in the city. I think the world of them, to be quite honest with you, I think to do a yeoman's job, and I will learn from them, and hopefully I can give, give back a little bit of my business experience as well as just day-to-day operations there. I'm rather a pragmatic individual, and I think I could go a long way in the city here. Overall city functions and responsibilities, I think it's incredibly well-run, and I only want to add to that, not negate or take away from that. Also, to provide a foundation for healthy neighborhoods, successful businesses, by investing in comprehensive planning. I see that they were nearing the end of our current comprehensive plan, and if we haven't already completed, I'm sure it's being worked on for our next one. Critical. I don't look 10 years ahead, 20 years ahead. I think we have a responsibility as city council to lay the format for the next 50 or 100. Since I've been here for 30 years, it goes pretty quickly, and I think it can go a long way for planning long-term commitments here. Again, I reiterate, city hall has a very hard-working staff, and I only look forward to working with them in all their endeavors there. There's a circus, we'll call it quits with that.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Mr. Shore.
Essential services to me are police and fire, of course, like my predecessors say. Those are essential, vital services, but I feel it'd be short-sighted of me to answer this question without hearing more from the community and going through and reviewing all the services that are being provided by the city. I would want to go through line by line and see what results we're getting from, from each specific department of the city. I want to empower residents to take control of the future and work with them and do that. I wouldn't want to make any snap decisions and continue to be unbiased. And that's that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. Mr. Wheeler.
Well, to chime in with everybody else, obviously, our police, fire, and our city workers are vital to our community. The cutback or eliminated, going with Jack here, I know the liquor stores are a good source of income for our city, but I honestly don't understand how we have a monopoly around them. I just spent time watching the past meeting on the charter and frontier situation, and all I kept hearing was, "We want competition. We want strong competition in these, in these infrastructure things." Well, I don't see why we're doing that here in Lakeville. I sit and talk to people all the time, and they're sitting there saying, "Well, I go to Burnsville. Don't you see the Burnsville saying, 'Don't go to Lakeville, come to Burnsville and get our liquor for half the price.'" It's just amazing to me how much we lose money on letting businesses leave Lakeville. And that would be my main thing of what we need to cut back on and really take a look at what we want to stand for and how much business we want to keep in our own city instead of letting it escape to other cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Again, we invite the audience to complete question cards located just outside the city council chambers. Write down any questions you may have and give them to our timekeeper, Mr. Roach. Thank you. This second question, we're going to begin with Mr. Aranda. Each candidate, again, will have 90 seconds to answer the following question. As an aging yet growing community, how do you plan to maintain our current infrastructure while addressing our future needs for roads and amenities?
Well, I can think of a couple of ways. Make sure that the city is advocating for its resources at the state level and attracting young families and demographics to Lakeville. What I mean is, how long have we done, with regard to our infrastructure, how long have we done our roads using the same technology? So, it's important that we look into new technologies with great initiatives in mind that can save us money. Currently, there is technology that uses recycled plastics for road construction that's, is being considered, that only lasts, that not only lasts longer than our, than what our current roads are, but it's also up to 30 to 40% more cost-effective. I would explore ways of bringing that technology to Lakeville or lobby to bring that technology to Lakeville. I would look into new ways to create also housing opportunities for newer fam, new families, also for students. I'm going to talk about my experience when I was going to the University of Minnesota, or when I was a student at the University of Minnesota, I should say. My, my, the transit location that I, that I would take was Burnsville, and there were hundreds of students, hundreds of students that would. And so, I mean, instead of our students leaving Lakeville, what kind of opportunities are we, are we providing for them, for them to commute to the university or other colleges? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aranda. Mr. Helyer.
Well, I think we all know, Lakeville is really at a cross, crossroads, and I've had the privilege over the last few months to serve on the Long-Term Facilities Committee with the Lakeville School District. And recently, we took a look at what enrollment projections are going to be over the next 10 years, and what we found from the demographers is that numbers are basically going to be flat. We'll see a little bit of a bump on some open enrollment, but what does that really mean? It means that as we grow our community, we should be shaped by our community and not by a regional planning agency like the Med Council. We should be deciding ourselves how we want to grow and not based on bureaucracy in St. Paul and Minneapolis. New development should also pay for their fair share and not burden the overall system and not ignore the maintenance and the infrastructure that comes with any new development. We also need to encourage development for people like my mom and dad and my in-laws who still live in the same home that I grew up in, and they don't need the square footage my brother and I and my in-laws had as well, and we need to figure out a way to encourage them to stay in Lakeville, retire so they can be around their grandkids, and encourage younger families to purchase the homes that they're in. And finally, 22% of our allocation for property taxes now goes to debt service, and I think that it's really important that we set a long-term strategy to tackle that issue to ensure that we can keep up our infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Helyer. Mr. McCarty.
Well, as an aging community, I certainly feel the brunt of that. A lot of your comments were very well-placed. I appreciate that. With, what is it, something like 11 million or some ridiculous amount retiring per day nationwide, I don't think we're going to be the only community to be faced with this. I think long-term is our community, is, again, I'm very big on working with the current administration. I think we have a lot of expertise there. Okay. I think they make good decisions. They have far better follow-through than I ever can, and I'll listen to the recommendations, and again, I reiterate that I'll listen to the other 60,000 residents here. I think that's very important. I'm not here to listen to developers. I'm not here to listen to entrepreneurs only. I'm here to listen to the residents. I am a resident here. Along with that, I'm a strong advocate, or at least a good student of these shared quasi-municipality as well as private institutions, such as, I call it, the CDC, the other things where people can grow in place nicely, they have nice mixed income guidelines and so on and so forth. I think that's an exemplary example of the combination of government and the private sector working together. Done well, it can be done very well. I see a number of developments around here that are being developed nicely. They're aesthetically very pleasing, they're well-run, and I think the future use of the buildings down the road should be, be, be thought of, like schools. I come from an area where the schools have been virtually closed down, one after another. You're stuck with the infrastructure and the superstructure, and no students in there. Again, I'm after the long-term plan. I think anyone in this room can do a good job for the, for the five or 10 years thing. I think we should look 25, 50 years down the road.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Mr. Shore.
Within the next two years, we will see 400 new homes come to Lakeville. That's like 20,000 people coming to our city looking for groceries and hammers and everything that you need when you move into a new house. I want to grow responsibly and make sure that those people know that the things are here to work with small business and to purchase from small business, and that money should stay in Lakeville and go towards the infrastructure. We have a strong manufacturing base here in Lakeville, and I think a lot of them should be held accountable for keeping our roads up to, up to par, and, you know, that's giving back to the city, and that's everyone's job. We all need to take care of it. Yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. Mr. Wheeler.
Amenities will be my main goal to address while helping the community. We're losing millions of dollars in neighboring communities by using their facilities and restaurants and local shops. Examples are the turf spaces, the indoor facilities, the recreational areas, the main things I would like to see improved in the city. We need to put a major focus on establishing an all-inclusive community. I, for one, would rather spend all my time and money in Lakeville than I know will grow our community and economics for my family and for our community. Now, as doing the door-knocking, which is a really weird thing to do, I've ran into some great characters. They like to talk about barbecue a lot, but we also gotten into some deeper discussions. Taxes, their property taxes. They don't like the whole recreational thing. It's, they're, they're past that. So, as talking to them, I feel like we need to, we need to constantly be upgrading our future of our community to stay one step ahead of all others, but we have to find ways to make this possible. I don't see why we couldn't give 65 and older Lakeville homestead residents a 10% property tax decrease. They're past what they want to do. So, and maybe on top of that, give them the option to do a 10% donation if they like to. Now, with all the guys I talked to, not being stressed to have to pay that, but they get the 10% once they've stayed here for a long time, they're, they're a homesteaded resident, a lot of them would probably give back or more. I think this is just one way that we continue to make Lakeville strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Atkinson.
All right. First of all, I think we need to, we need stuff done right the first time and done to standard. I'm just going to, and also with the most, with the newest technology. Several years ago, what almost prompted me to run a city council was they were repaving Highview from 175th to Dodd. This is before the roundabout, and they spent $65,000 repaving that stretch. Within about two months, they dug a hole and connected the development next door with water and sewer. That was just not done right the first time. So, stuff like that, 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 that we need to look at, make sure that we're spending our money right, doing it, doing it correctly. Also, I believe that requiring developers to, you know, have additional money and long-term holds our trust is a, is an option for maintaining our infrastructure. We need to be utilizing our available resources wisely. Sometimes we just don't take, take the right approach, and we kind of do it haphazard. So, that's very important. I also think that we, keeping taxes low, so when we do have these special assessments, it's not an extra burden, you know, everybody's going to have, have a special assessment sometime if you live in a residential area long enough. But if you're keeping taxes- But if you're keeping taxes low, they don't make it less burdensome. And also, lastly, is I do like an idea of somehow incentivifying empty nephsters or elderly couples to stay in Lakeville somehow.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Before we begin the third question again, if anyone in the audience has a question they'd like to ask, please write down on the question card and bring that forward to Mr. Roach. So, Mr. Halyer, you will begin this round with the third question. Each candidate, again, will have ninety seconds to answer the following question. How would you characterize the business climate in Lakeville? What do you feel should be done to attract and retain business in Lakeville?
Well, I think the business climate in Lakeville is strong, but it can always use an improvement. I've been meeting with residents and business leaders as, as I started this campaign earlier this summer and through door knocking and, and meetings. And some of the feedback I hear from business folks is it'd like to be just a little bit easier to do business in Lakeville. And one example, I talked to a business leader that said, you know, this is the first time since I started my business over twenty years ago that I felt like I, I actually was welcome when I was putting up a pole barn on my property. And he talked about how he has over a hundred employees that every day eat lunch in the, the community and how easy it could be for him to move to Elko, for instance. And so, he just doesn't want any special treatment. He just wants to be treated fairly. And I think that that's really important. So, if elected, I'll work to help streamline the process for permitting regulations and make them more predictable. And finally, I think one way really to attract businesses is to provide the highest quality workforce. And that can be done really in two parts. The first is working with the business community, city and school districts to make our kids the most talented and educated. It's important for business leaders to work with schools and the city to expand programs to teach the trades and also other career developments. The other part, as I mentioned earlier, is creating environment where young and talented workers and their families want to move to Lakeville in the first place and recruiting them to work and stay in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Halyer. Mr. McCarty.
How would you characterize the business climate in Lakeville? What do you feel should be done to attract and retain businesses in Lakeville? Well, I've been in business a while, and in general, I've been in Lakeville for a while. And since this transition from the, from the airport area all the way up to the current, that's medium-sized manufacturing, warehousing, so on and so forth. I know there's always concern with our, in quotes, downtown Lakeville area. Again, I go back to working with the current staff. I think there's a lot of input that the current city administrators can give us, as well as from the, from the population out here. I agree, we want to maintain that small-town feel, which I think is incredibly important, but we don't want to stick our heads in the sand like some other communities that kind of regress back to the old roots that are, are non-productive. At the same time, we should look at other communities around here, and they're all over the country. This is not rocket scientists. You can see it up now in Lakeville where the developers have grabbed hold and not let go. You can see County Road Forty-two and Galaxy where the buildings have sprung up way too high, way too fast, et cetera, et cetera. I think with proper planning, adherence to the plan, and long-term goals, I think is very important at this stage. Okay? And I think that's a big thing. Also, I think our current economic environment is very well, is progressing well. I go to a lot of the city hall meetings and so on and so forth, and you have the TIFs and so on and so forth. He does a good job with attracting the businesses. In business environment, the development environment is very apropos and very, very progressive at this stage. I think if anything, we have to stand back and be a little more selective of what we want in the city. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Mr. Schorr.
Thank you. I would characterize the business climate in Lakeville as strong currently. But my point earlier, four hundred new homes in the community. We have the potential to be an entering suburb in the next five, ten years. We will be with, with the growth, growth that we're going to see. And it's important that we keep that money that comes with those families in Lakeville. We need to work to, to make sure that everyone feels, you know, that their home is here and that we have that small-town mentality that we're known for, that we've always had. So, I would, you know, encourage that and do everything I could to keep that around, incentivizing small business and, and doing that. I'm a fourth generation. I come from a family-owned business. And I, I know what it means to, you know, inherit that and that responsibility and to want to work hard to, you know, appease the, the forefathers. So, I think family-owned business and small business should always be, feel very welcomed in Lakeville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schorr. Mr. Wheeler.
I feel like the small-town ability is going to be really tough for us. We have the most land. We're going to be one of the fourth, fifth largest cities in, in the state, period, at one time. We have to get rid of this whole, we're a small town. It's just not going to work anymore. I think we're doing a pretty good job on acquiring some larger businesses at this time and retaining them as well. But I feel we need to look at some ways to help the smaller business grow and get others coming to Lakeville. As a personal business owner here in Lakeville, I've gone through several different changes. I've opened up other restaurants, and I see the differences in different communities that I've been in. One of the main roadblocks that we have here in Lakeville is that we are pretty young to the development stage of what we will be. We're very young. There's a lot, there's not a lot of buildings already built that businesses can come in and take over. So, it costs about twenty-five to fifty percent more for a small business, big business to come into Lakeville to open. So, we have to become, we have to have an ability to help these businesses and show them, here's what we can do as a city to take some of that burden to build that first infrastructure. After the first one's done, it's a lot easier for, if it doesn't work, for the next guy to come in and, and open and not cost as much. And he lasts a while, and there's a, there's a cycle with that. I think from what I've learned with owning the businesses and being where I'm at, that is a big roadblock we will have in Lakeville due to the fact of just being a young community that is going to be a huge community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Atkinson.
All right. Thank you. Business climate, commercial manufacturing, I think we're pretty healthy. I mean, we have room to grow, and that's one of the nice things about Lakeville. As Mr. Wheeler said, we're one of the largest area suburbs in the whole metro area. So, there is room to grow to attract more commercial and manufacturing. Resident, or retail, we need some work. We need to stop, I think, some of the randomness that's going on. And I spoke with people, and when they talk about Lakeville, it is randomness. And we need to figure out how to build a traffic builder, something that'll attract people to one general area. I go, I try to do a lot of travel in towns under a hundred thousand. You see some really unique city center areas that have so much out there. We don't even have to look that far. You go to Apple Valley, there's a theater, there's Best Buy, there's Target, there's restaurants, there's a bowling alley, all within walking distance. Our bowling alley, our theater are several miles apart. You know, same thing with, you know, Burnsville. The mall, look what's built up around that. Centennial Lakes in Edina, the shops of Arbor Lake in Maple Grove. And all you have to do is go over to Hopkins and see what they've done in downtown Hopkins lately. There is opportunity to build a traffic builder, to get the core of retail and something unique that will put people and keep people in Lakeville and have it be a destination.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Mr. Aranda.
Thank you. I think that our business climate here in Lakeville is, is strong for big business, but similar to what everyone else has said already, it's for a small business, it's, it could, we could do better. It could be stronger. It's important to grow our tax base and make businesses, small businesses, stronger. I think that we should find initiatives to help with business startups. Everyone's happy to have big business here like the FedEx freight in our city. But our consideration should also be that we share a collective task to build on Lakeville's strengths when it comes to small businesses. By which I mean that we could do more for Main Street and downtown Lakeville. We can consider healthy investments and foster growth for entrepreneurs and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aranda. Mr. Halyer.
I did this one.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, Brian.
Actually, you're going to...
I'll go again, Brian, if you want me to.
Anything to add?
Sorry. So, our first question from the audience, and we'll begin with Mr. McCarty and, and with Mr. Halyer. What is your vision to manage affordable housing in our city?
What is our vision to handle affordable housing in our city? I hesitate because I know how complex this answer can and should be and be considered. I'll have a certain amount of learning curve. I don't want to learn from the Democrats or the Republicans. I'm here to work for the city. I'm here to work for the population of the city. I don't answer to the businesses of the city, but I do answer to the population. I have to go back and listen to what they say. I think there are certain mechanisms in place statistically that can be easily analyzed. When I see the school board can analyze elasticity of demand for asking questions on the, on the school board for, for being the ability to overtax or undertax certain millages. I think the methodology is there that we can get good input from our population to see what they want to do on this long-term as far as the, in quotes, affordable housing. And again, that's a relative term. I think we have to pay attention to that term and wanting to learn.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Mr. Schorr.
Yes. So, my vision to handle affordable housing, I believe we currently have plans in place to bring up some affordable housing to Lakeville. And my thing with that is to make sure that no one's lost in the cracks and really, you know, focus on building that sense of community that we talked about. We may not be a small town. That might not be where we're headed. But we need to maybe act like it and consider that, keep that in mind as we grow. And just like, we recently closed the food shelf in Lakeville. If we're going to have affordable housing, we should probably have, you know, amenities for people like that and to make sure that, you know, everyone has the same opportunities and everyone can, can succeed because that's what we're about. We look after each other. Lakeville's strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schorr. Mr. Wheeler.
I feel there's, there's several different ways that the city can correlate with entrepreneurs and other businesses that are in Lakeville already. I'm not quite sure how much land we own as a, as a, as Lakeville, but you can offer that to some of these larger affordable housing complex builders who do it and set up a TIF program for them and say, hey, guys, we need X amount. Let's put this together. Let's sit down and let's see how this works where we're hand-in-hand with a private developer to put this out there. I agree that we both, we, we also need a lot of more affordable housing, which is going to bring in a lot more different diversity into our community. And we're going to have to be ready to, to go with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Atkinson.
I'll, I'll come right on the record and say I'm opposed to any zoning made for strategic high-density housing, period. I think the market will dictate the housing cost. I believe in that. I don't believe that we need to be dictated by Met Council for requirements. Once again, we have diversity. We do not need to create it. There, this is a, this is, this area is, is generating diversity through just the market. And I think that we need to just look at that and not try and force stuff because market will dictate. If all of a sudden we cannot sell homes and we cannot get developers to build homes here, then we need to maybe look at other options. But for now, it's all the market will dictate.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Mr. Aranda.
My experience of why we came here to Lakeville was because it's a quiet town, great schools, and that, that's something that I think that should be afforded to everybody, you know, or at least, you know, people who qualify for affordable housing. And my vision for, for that would, would be likewise what others have said on, on this forum is to, you know, talk to developers and see what ways we, we can create space for affordable housing. And, and yeah, have, and create, I think it's important to create that diversity. You know, it's, it's not diverse, and in my, in my views, you know, you can also create, you, you can create diversity. You can bring, invite other people from other walks of life into your city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aranda. Mr. Halyer.
Thank you. You know, it's, we're getting to the point in, in the housing market in Lakeville where it's really tough for a young family to move in to a new home. And if elected, I think one thing I'm really focused on is to be an advocate for our city on a state level. And what I mean by that is every new home that's built today, a quarter of the cost is based on regulatory concerns. And that is the artificial increase of land and what happens and what land can be developed on. It's, we have one of the strictest energy codes in the country, well above some of the more warmer climates. And so, I think those are some of the things that we need to advocate for as city council people to encourage more affordable housing to come into Lakeville. I think if new projects come in, we need to consider each under a scent, the lens of what the community wants and if it's something that's promoted and that the market should drive the industry for development for affordable housing in Lakeville.
Thank you, Mr. Halyer. We'll begin the second audience question with you, Mr. Schorr. Each candidate, again, will have ninety seconds to answer the following question. What do you believe the city can do to improve the workforce to meet the expanding needs of businesses in Lakeville?
Well, with the four hundred new homes that will be coming in the next two years, I think we're going to see a large influx in population. And if we do have the affordable housing, the people that come in, those are all going to be people that should be encouraged and, and made feel welcome in the community and to, to work in the community. That's like a very, very vital role of living someplace feeling, feeling welcome and having a sense of purpose. I would encourage all new residents to look for opportunities in Lakeville and, you know, continue to drive that small-business point home. That's going to be the, the most important thing to, to build that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schorr. Mr. Wheeler.
Who, I could use a lot more workforce. It is, it is a very tough atmosphere here in Lakeville because you don't have a lot of college students to start in those entry-level jobs. So, the small businesses are looking like, who do we hire? There's, there's not a lot there to hire. And when you bring in all types of economics to our city and start doing the affordable housing and bringing people to a place where they start the affordable housing, they come work at Baldi's Plug and take that next step and work there, and then they get another job. And they, they create thing, and they come and get the next home in Lakeville. And they stay here because it's a community. You start from the bottom and you go to the top. Lakeville's more of those, you come here, and I'm from Missouri, so prices still shock me. I've been here for twelve years. It's, Lakeville's more of a, you start here and you can only go here. I mean, the median home, house pricing right now is over three hundred thousand. I mean, that's, you're not getting a young family that's making fifty thousand dollars a year coming to Lakeville that cannot afford to come here. So, to get the workforce here, we have to create more jobs. We have to bring in the affordable housing, and we have to be a city that's willing to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Atkinson.
Can you just repeat it? Is it, can you repeat that, please?
What do you believe the city can do to improve the workforce to meet the expanding needs of businesses in Lakeville?
Well, once again, I'll take the position that, you know, this isn't really what government can do. This is partnering what business can do. You know, if you, if, if you build it, they will come. As we continue to, to grow with manufacturing in our area and commercial businesses, partnering, encouraging them to work with our local high schools to develop a workforce is key. I don't think that, that, you know, this is something that, that we need to, as, as government, create a workforce for, you know, high, high school kids or, or small business owners. We're looking at more, I believe, a workforce for more of the manufacturing, the commercial-type work, some of the high-tech. If we end up catching a high-tech company like an Amazon that moved out to Shakopee, we'd have opportunity there, I truly believe, to partner with them and encourage them and help them work within our own schools to develop the workforce. And that, in its sense, could keep a few of the younger people here with higher-paying jobs. It's not the, it's not the, you know, eight-dollar-an-hour jobs that we need people to, to come here and, and live and try and support a family. It's the, the more higher-paying industrial jobs that are out there.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Mr. Aranda.
I'm going to fall back on, on what I said earlier about improving our, our amenities for youth. I think that if we do that, it could provide us with a, a certain accessibility to, like, one of my, I think it was Baldi who said it, excuse me, Brian, who said that we could, we could have entry-level positions for our younger youth. And we can achieve that by, you know, building sports facilities or improving our parks and rec. And so, falling back on our, on our, on what the city of Lakeville can do for its residents, I was going to coin that same phrase. If you build it, you know, we have, we have to build it. We have to bring it, we have to bring it into, into fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aranda. Mr. Halyer.
Thanks. I kind of touched on this earlier, but I think it really is, is partially driven by the city, but more from the business community and also... by the city, but more from the business community and also from the schools and, and promoting those joint partnerships. I used to work for a member of Congress and we had a request from a local chamber that they wanted to have apprenticeships for high school students, but there were too many OSHA requirements for 15, 16, 17-year-olds to work in manufacturing. So we had to actually work with OSHA on a federal level to allow these high school kids in Chanauson to have that experience. And so I think it's pivotal that if regulatory things come in the way that, at a city level, that we can help streamline that process to get kids and younger workers to experience the trades and know that those are long-term careers and promote that in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Helyer. Mr. McCarty?
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Sure can. What do you believe the city can do to improve the workforce to meet the expanding needs of businesses in Lakeville?
Mr. Atkinson and Mr. Helyer, I think we're on very salient, important points here. I keep going back. There's a, there's a, you know, I'm very politically motivated, state orientated and have strong federal and state beliefs. As a city council member, I have to temper my personal temperament and just deal with the issues that are facing the city. I hear good things. We have a very high, you know, have great high school, so on and so forth, putting a high level of students, so on and so forth. I think part of that, in my opinion, is that the students are so busy that they can't be around for entry-level jobs, so on and so forth. I started washing dishes when I was 14 years old for a buck 10 an hour. I remember very clearly. I was still washing dishes many years later, okay?
That's what I do best.
Atkinson's talked a certain amount about a certain amount of laissez-faire type of thing where the partnerships between business and the, and the, and the cities. Again, I go back to what my position is. I have to do my job and that's work with the city staff and with the population to work for and to get things done that they deem to be important. I'm certainly opinionated enough that I don't have to interject my opinions into these local affairs.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Mr. Wheeler, you'll begin the next question from the audience. And the question is, and you'll have 90 seconds for, to answer this question. What are your thoughts on operating a municipal liquor business? If against, how would you replace the funding it provides today?
I'm not pregnant to how much money it brings in, but I also am very pregnant of how much we lose by having it. We lose big box stores coming in. Trader Joe's, Sam's Club, things like that will never come to Lakeville if they can't sell liquor, period. There's four, 500 jobs right there. The liquor store, it, it's been a great object for Lakeville, but it's time for it to be done. And it's, that's it. It's time for it to be done, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Atkinson?
I'll, I made it clear earlier that, you know, I don't think that we need to be in competition with, with the private sector. I, when I, when I looked at this, you know, I'd even say this is going back a couple of years ago, trying to find out what, what the amount of money it brings in. I've seen, I, I can't quote it. It, it is, it is a, it's, it's like a needle though that we have to take out. We have to figure out other revenue streams. I do believe that if, if it's gone and we get a, I don't even know, is it a total spirit or total something? You know, a bigger box store like that comes into town, they will put jobs here. They will pay taxes. I think it can be generated several, maybe not several times, but at least one or two times over the money loss can be recouped through the private sector.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure will. What are your thoughts on operating a municipal liquor business? If against, how would you replace the funding it provides today?
I think that one of the ways that we could consider this is first, you know, listening to our, our residents and, you know, what they want. Because, you know, I hear this a lot, you know, speaking to our local business owners that, you know, we should move on, that we should continue to grow. And that's great for business, but you know, what do our, what do our residents want? And personally, I, I, I'm on the fence about the Lakeville-owned liquor license, liquor. And I, I don't, I, 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 I'm not necessarily against it, you know, but if I, if I were, I, I, I suppose that one of the ways that we could replace it is, you know, having opportunities for small businesses, small businesses to come in and sell liquor or, you know, like some of, some of, it's difficult. It's difficult, yeah. But I think one of the ways that we could, we could definitely look at it is if we, if we had, you know, big business or other, other businesses to come in and, you know, also find opportunities here in Lakeville, like some of my other predecessors have said.
Thank you, Mr. Aranda. Mr. Helyer?
We're number one. We are the number one generator for revenue for liquor in the state. Edina and Richfield are two and three. We generate about a million dollars a year to the city that pays for things like trucks and new snowplow blades. So we need to have a very tough conversation as a city if that's something that we want to move away from. And I've talked to a lot of people door knocking and they're really torn on it. And, you know, I talked to people door knocking downtown that, you know, they were hoping that Trader Joe's would come in and replace Ingraham's at some point because they want to have a walkable grocery store, but Trader Joe's isn't going to come here if we have municipal liquor. But I have to give credit really to our city staff. We're number one because we've outsmarted Total Wine. Our director of liquor has learned to undercut Total Wine and we're doing better. But as I mentioned, we need to have a tough conversation because I think we're preventing some really good retail development, commercial development that could occur. And ultimately, that property tax revenue from commercial business would be able to replace the money loss at a, at a city level. So again, I think, you know, we need to have the tough conversation in the city if that's something that we want to pursue.
Thank you, Mr. Helyer. Mr. McCarty?
While I agree with Mr. Helyer's comment as well as Mr. Atkinson's, again, I, I won't go, I don't, I'm not sure of the history. I think there's a, a history of the liquor stores here in, in Lakeville that goes back, that predates our times and the start of the city there where we actually granted, what do you call it, municipal monopoly. I, I love monopolies, you know, I'm sure it's been very profitable. I, sometimes I think the city, we should sell car insurance and so on and so forth. Again, city council, we work for the city and the population. I see the reasons for the liquor. I'm sure it's very profitable, so on and so forth. I think there's a tradition here. I think that's be looked at very carefully. I'd have to really reflect on that. I know, I, I know a lot more about the history than I'm letting loose on that thing. And I think there's a tradition here that goes back a number of years. So you have to kind of not, not step on toes one way or the other. That's not the issue. But you have to really decide where that revenue stream should be replaced, if it is, or should we expand that a little bit? I don't know. I don't know the answer to it. I'm of the mind that that's not a priority issue right this moment. I think we should concentrate on the development of the city, the population densities. Everyone's big on promoting businesses. I don't think that's the problem right now. We look back at 2008, that was an issue. Today, I don't think any businesses in here should be a top priority. I think controlling the business environment in our city, selecting the businesses that we want here is currently being done. I think that's what we should promote.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Mr. Schor?
This topic, I actually worked at Lakeville Liquor for a while. And I have to say, I mean, it was, it was a great job. I loved it. I hope whoever submitted that question was treated well by their cashier. People love it. It keeps property taxes low. My personal feeling would be to talk to the city and talk to everybody, see what we really feel about it, get a, a general consensus. We are a pretty puritanical state in terms of liquor licensing and, and all that. But our city, you know, it brings back a lot of good to the city. So we, we need to have a serious conversation about it. It's good for that money to come back to us directly. So, you know, I don't think we have outsmarted Total Wine because I'm a, a Lakeville resident who goes to Total Wine. I work for MillerCoors currently. And I think, I don't think a, a government monopoly on Lakeville liquors is the best thing. But, you know, it, it's done very well for us. So we would have to have a serious conversation about it. And as your city councilman, I would do everything I would to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schor. We do have time for one more audience-generated question. And we're going to begin this question with Mr. Atkinson. Tax levies rise every year. What can be done to help keep seniors in their homes and in the city?
Well, as I stated earlier, I think we need to really look at some type of way to incentivize seniors with some type of property tax rebate. You know, I don't know what the age is. I don't know if it's 60, 55, empty. I, I don't know. But we establish some type of property tax rebate. This may have to be even done at the state level and push it there. Wife and I, we're empty nesters. Like I said, we have six kids. There's not a house big enough right now because they, they leave, they come back, they multiply. And they, now when we have the family over, we need a large house. We need to stay in our home because we do have all the kids and family visiting. And that is something I'm thinking about is, you know, how do we stay in this large home as we see 4.9% tax levies? I use the 4.9 because that's a, that's under five. And we see these, these levies year after year after year. So the only way I really think that we can keep seniors in the home is to have some type of, of rebate or some type of incentive for seniors. And I don't know if that, that can even be done at the city level or may have to move to the state.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Mr. Aranda?
There are a couple of ideas that I have. And one of them is, you know, that a lot of these empty nesters, as we, as we're, as we're calling them, sometimes, you know, they have extra rooms. They have extra, you know, places to, to live and, or, you know, to, to afford. And my, my idea is, well, regarding the tax levy, I mean, as, as was mentioned earlier, I mean, I think that we could incentivize that, you know, towards, towards, you know, our seniors, you know, create some type of, create some type of safety net for them so that, you know, they don't have to worry about that so much. But I mean, there are ideas, you know, that have been implemented elsewhere where empty nesters, you know, house students, you know, is, is an idea. And, I mean, I know that a lot of people not, might not be open to that. But I think that what I'm, what I'm trying to get to and, and i- is that this is, this is a much broader conversation, it's a much broader topic because, I mean, there's, this isn't just in Lakeville. I mean, this is, this happens in a lot of cities. And I think that we need to find ways to advocate, not just, you know, not just talking about tax levies here. I mean, not just talking about tax levies here in, in Lakeville, but we also need to advocate for, for ourselves at, at the state and the national level so that we can take care of our seniors. And that's something that I would do at city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aranda. Mr. Helyer?
Well, as I kind of mentioned before, I think one key component is really creating development that seniors want to live in, first of all, whether it's downsizing into a condo or something. And I think the project that's on, off of County Road Five is a great start. And I think more projects like that would be good. Ultimately, I really want to keep a lid on property taxes for everybody. I think if we were able to do that while we're a thriving community. And now that my wife's not in the room, maybe we can create a situation where if your in-laws want to move in with you and, and build out your basement or something, that's okay. She's not here to, to say no. But I just think it's really important. I know that, that Lakeville has explored things about short-term residency permits in the past and has, has kind of put a hole in that. So just want to make sure that housing options are available for everybody to be able to stay in the city, that they want to live where their grandkids are.
Thank you, Mr. Helyer. Mr. McCarty?
Important question. Again, a compli, complicated answer is I think everyone touched on certain things. I go back to, again, I'm 65 just now, okay? And I make a conscious choice to stay in Lakeville because I like the current environment. I like the current standards of living here and I like my community. At the same time, I had mentioned earlier about these quasi-government, private developments, Dakota County Community Action, whatever it is, it is there. And I speak very highly of them. It's very successful. In fact, it's not only so very successful, it's been replicated and duplicated about 1,000, 10,000 times over throughout the country, probably 100,000. Incredibly lucrative, incredibly well-done. So again, going back to what, what our seniors want, I think there's a sort of standing back as a city council member. I have my opinions. But I'm here to run a city and keep a lid on taxes. I do think that could be this, I call it mission creep. I'm sure he'll relate to that statement there. I think taxes have to, we have to figure out a way to keep taxes down. Coming from a business background and a consulting background, reduction and putting a cap on costs are probably some of the easiest improvements you can make. That's where consultants make their money. You can always cut costs. I think it's important to do it well without jeopardizing our city services. And again, I go back to very long-term planning. I think any of us and anyone concerned with this can do it for five, 10, 15, 20 years. I don't have crystal balls, but we can all look at older communities, whether it be Excelsior, any place else around here in Detroit, the Gross Points, Shores Farms, et cetera, Dearborn. Decide how you want to grow out. That's what we should go for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Mr. Schor?
Thank you. I want to preface by saying I love old people. I just turned 25, so I might not be able to relate. But as city council, I, I do think we need to make a choice to incentivize the elderly who aren't working or if we want to bring in young families who, who are working and, you know, continue to grow and go down that path. But this is a, a conversation we would need to discuss with the community. Everyone loves Lakeville and everyone has a place here. So I, I, I wouldn't want to write code that paints us into a corner in terms of tax breaks for the elderly. I would want to look at what percent of the population that would affect and, and see from there and, you know, work with the community to try to figure out a, a reasonable way to deal with that because I do think we need to focus on growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schor. Mr. Wheeler?
Wish it was a debate because then I could say I said something first, but
Wrong, wrong.
The, the, all right, Trump. The senior citizens, I, I think, you know, what I stated earlier is that, you know, if they're, if they're homesteaded and they're living here in Lakeville, what, what's wrong with the 10% discount rebate, however it comes in? It's a small token and I think it keeps a lot of people happy. I'll go back to what I say to my, my dad. I'm like, I used to dad my, $5 my dad to death. Five bucks. Give me five bucks. Give me five bucks. My kid, it's 20 bucks. Five bucks isn't 20 bucks anymore. So taxes, I'm, people are like, you pay a lot of taxes. I pay a lot of taxes. Taxes are a necessity for us to live in this, in this country that we live in, period. They're going to go up. They're going to go down. We're going to cut. We're going to do this. Our job, if we are elected, is to be the overseers, be the parents of this town to help eliminate the tax burdens and see where they're going to go. To safeguard your money that we have it, 30 seconds, all right. Safeguard your money so that we are the ones who, you elect us. So we're going to look at the taxes and say, here's what we can do with the money. Here's what we can't do with the money. Well, to our senior citizens, I think there's always something that we can do. They've paid their fair share. So the time is to say, hey, you hit this landmark, we're going to help you back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. We'll move on to wrap up and closing remarks. Each candidate will have 90 seconds for closing remarks. And we'll begin with Mr. Aranda.
It's been a pleasure coming here tonight and speaking at this forum. I really appreciate the opportunity. As a city council candidate, and if I am elected, it would be a pleasure to represent the interests of the people of Lakeville, people of Lakeville first and foremost. I think that we are a strong community. We can only grow stronger. I've lived here for almost 10 years and I, I, I will continue living here. And it's, it's a place that I call home and it's somewhere that, it's, it's, it's a place that I, I feel that, you know, that a lot of other people will want to call home to. And I, I think that we should be open to those, to those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aranda. Mr. Helyer?
Well, thank you. And thanks to you, Brian, and the chamber and my fellow candidates at tonight's forum. I have new ideas and fresh, fresh perspective, but I've lived here long enough to really appreciate the charm that makes Lakeville special. And as a decade-long volunteer in the schools, member of the School Facility Planning Commission, the Dakota County Planning Commission, I care deeply about our town and our community. And I've always had a sense to serve my community. But I also want to be accessible. So write this down, Luke@lukehelyer.org. Luke@lukehalyer.org is my email address. My cell phone number is (612) 237-2551. You can reach me at any hour, well, almost any hour. My one-year-old gets up at four, so that can tell you when you can call me. As Lakeville continues to grow, we must focus energy on developing a place that supports families as they raise their children, as well as helps seniors stay in their community throughout retirement. I'm proud to have been endorsed by Dakota County Commissioner and former councilwoman, Maryliss Holberg. If elected, I'll work together with community voices to create a great place to raise a family, start a business, and retire with the highest standard of living. Finally, our hometown is a part of us. It's our identity, and I promise to work hard every day to ensure that we remain proud of our hometown. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Halyer. Mr. McCarty.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure being here. I thoroughly enjoyed it. And I'll go back to, this is, I keep going back to the key points 'cause I think it's critical at this level of government. My job is to answer to the population. My job is to answer to sixty thousand people, okay? And I go back to priorities. Promote core beliefs, economic prosperity, education of childrens, and advocacy of parental responsibilities. Strengthen family and community within, within the city's vision statement, and to promote a superior quality life, unique and connect, and with connected neighborhoods, and a character that reflects a strong sense of community. In lieu of this, an intense amount of importance is for, for a healthy neighborhood, successful businesses, is to invest in a comprehensive planning, high-quality and efficient services. And lastly, a tense amount of importance is the participation, input, and effective business partnerships. And I go back again. My job right now is to listen to the input of the sixty thousand residents and not just look at five years, ten years. You wanna go down, you wanna go down that fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. And that's not too long a time, okay? Look around. Everyone has a good, good experiences, bad experiences, how communities develop. I won't go into name con, and especially coming from the Detroit area. Okay, I've seen it done wrong, okay? And that's a whole nother story there. But anyway, pleasure to be here. Look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Mr. Schor.
Thank you for coming out every night, or tonight, everyone. You're some of the most involved people in this community, and I really respect that and appreciate you taking the time to be here. With my closing remarks, I just wanna say that my youth means that I don't have any biases or strong feelings, one way or the other, towards, you know, any, any action that we could take. So my job is gonna be solely to listen to the community and to go with what the people, you know, decide. And I, I will do that. I, I could, promise to do that. We should all love where we live, and what will make me great at this job is my passion for, for building up a community and, and being involved. I wanna make sure that the most beneficial route is taken for, for everyone and to, to grow this community. Like I said earlier, by 2020, Lakeville has the potential to be considered an inner-ring suburb, a major hub of the South Metro. So I wanna be sure that everyone's voice is heard and that we can grow responsibly and emphasize local business and build community. That's the vision. So thank you for coming out again.
Thank you, Mr. Schor. Mr. Wheeler.
Also wanna thank everybody for coming out. This has been a, a fun ride for me. Like I said earlier, the door knocking is just unbelievable. My, I'm like a parent, right? So when you're, you're always gonna see me as me. You see me at Baldi's, I'm me. See me up here, I'm me. I'm not a political guy. I'm a guy that you're probably gonna vote for because you know where I stand. I'm gonna be here to protect our city, to be the guy with the voice who says, "That's not right. That we can do something different, we can do something better." I'm here to help our city become as great as we already are and to continue that growth. I will be an advocator for our parks and recs. I, I think our, our city needs a lot more. We're losing a lot of money for the lack of places we have for our, our athletes and our, our people to go and take care of their business of what we are. We're, we're a strong athletic community. Now, when it comes to businesses, I'm one of them. I'm, I'm, I'm the guy that you've already seen go through the rigmarole of sitting up here. I've came from barely being able to make it to having a substantial business here in Lakeville. And my trust is that you all see the, the honesty in me, that I will be a, a good partner with you all to help run our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Atkinson.
All right. Thank you. First, I would wanna thank my wife, Kathy, for the support, friends and families, and Brian Lester Holt could take a lesson or two from you. You've done a great job. Thank you. I have four priorities plus one. Taxes, taxes and spending. We need to hold the city levy to a minimum, if not flat. There's an opportunity to cut unnecessary spending. We just need to be able to look with a desire defined. Growth and development. I support well-planned commercial development that'll attract the right business partners. Like I said, we gotta stop some of the randomness here in our retail side. I wanna continue strong residential development, but it must be well thought out to preserve our small-town feel. I do believe we can still be a city of a hundred thousand and have a small-town feel. And this needs to keep enhancing our quality of life with our, with our citizens, our residents. Services. We provide incredible services here, and I do believe that people are willing to pay and will continue to pay for those services. However, we need to support them with an eye on waste. We need to make sure that we are not wasting. Transportation. We need to look at 2050 and beyond for transportation. And my plus one here, after talking to a lot of residents, we gotta find a solution to get rid of these rail cars in our city. They are an eyesore. So that's an easy one. I'm a salesperson. I'm gonna ask you for your vote. November eighth, I'd like you to vote for me, and tell your friends to vote for me. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. On behalf of the residents of Lakeville, I would like to thank each of the candidates for attending tonight's city council forum and your interest in municipal governance. I would also like to thank the city of Lakeville and staff for use of the facility and taping tonight's events. Thank you to those attending in person tonight, and thank you for your questions. The forum will be rebroadcast on Channel 180 and is also available on the city's website. The Lakeville Area Chamber has not and will not endorse any candidate in any election this year. Good night, and remember to vote Tuesday, November eighth.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1765.71][1765.71]